T-shirts are being worn. We have Teige Valier, Cheryl or Shirley Santana. If I pronounce your name wrong, correct me. Jade Lee Serrano, Kevin Ortiz, Mella Smith, Jasmine Weber, Sienna Simpson, Latavia Mundell, Natalie Calazo. Come on down. And just for the record, some school committee persons are running a little late. I know they're trying to get here too. Okay?
Hello. My name is Kevin Ortiz and I am a sixth grader, sixth grade student at Springfield Conservatory of the Arts. This year at SCOTUS we formed an after-school club called Show Choir. A show choir is a chorus that dances while they sing for performance. Our show club called Revolution is made up of 15 students in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade who stay after school twice a week to rehearse. Under the direction of Ms. Fortier, our dance teacher, and Ms. Karen, our music teacher, we took that little, what little rehearsal time we had to put together our show for this show choir season. In March, we traveled to Windsor Locks, Connecticut to perform in our first ever show choir festival. We earned a bronze rating and one performer, Shirley Santana, won an outstanding performer medal for her standout dance solo. We will be performing our show once more at the SCOTUS Performing Arts Showcase in June. Tonight, we wanted to give you a sample of our show. We will be singing faithfully by journey with vocal solist Jade Lee Serrano.
All right. And by the way, Principal Ryan Kelly is also here to, we appreciate that. So it's showtime. That's okay, that's okay.
We're just testing you.
Yeah. Your voice got a little deeper, that's all. Third time's a charm. That's okay, yeah.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
We're just testing you.
Yeah. Your voice got a little deeper, that's all. Third time's a charm. That's okay, yeah.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
We're just testing you.
Yeah. Your voice got a little deeper, that's all. Third time's a charm. That's okay, yeah.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
We're just testing you.
Yeah. Your voice got a little deeper, that's all. Third time's a charm. That's okay, yeah.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
We're just testing you.
Yeah. Your voice got a little deeper, that's all. Third time's a charm. That's okay, yeah.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
We're just testing you.
Yeah. Your voice got a little deeper, that's all. Third time's a charm. That's okay, yeah.
(singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay.
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 (singing) Highwayman.
That's okay, that's okay. Right.
Woo!
Springfield Conservatory of the Arts, way to go. Great job.
Yeah.
Okay.
An encore?
Encore, yeah. Springfield Public Day Middle Schools in the house. Desmond Santiago, DeAndre Morales, accompanied by the principal, Brianna Clancy, sped teacher, and Sarah Alwan, I L S. Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Desmond. I like my school very much. I have made a lot of friends here at Springfield Public Day Middle School. I like my classes. My favorite class is math with Ms. Carmichael. We are working on geometry. At the end of class, we play Kahoot on the computer. I really like learning on the computer. I do System 44 in ELA and I Ready. In math, we make PowerPoints and social studies. And in science, I really like Cells Alive. Thank you and have a good evening.
Nice job.
All right.
DeAndre, you're up.
Hello. My name is DeAndre Morales and I am one of the many students that attend Springfield Public Day Middle School. I am here today to talk about my school and the wonderful students that attend there. The staff work hard to make sure we all do well educationally and they make learning exciting. We have many activities that are fun. We just started a fishing club where students are going to learn how to cast reels and fish. The club is called Angling for Achievement and we are partnering with Springfield Police Officers. We start fishing the Friday after break and I am looking forward to it. My counselor, Ms. Casey, helps me find new coping skills and ways to positively act with my peers. I really like her. Thanks to her, my academics and my grades have improved since I started this school. I know my teachers and my counselor will support me. I will achieve my dream of joining the military and becoming a computer engineer.
Excellent. Quite the cheering section back there, Springfield Public Day Middle School. Way to go. Belieut Middle Schools in the house. Angelise Cortez, Nativia, if I'm pronouncing her wrong, Martinez, accompanied by Sarita Gravelin, Assistant Principal. Come on down and please correct me if I said your name wrong.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nativida Martinez. I'm a seventh grade student who attends Belieut Middle School. This is my third year here. During my first year because, wait, this is my third year here at Belieut School.
You're doing fine, Ms. Martinez. You're doing fine.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nativida Martinez. I'm a seventh grade student who attends Belieut Middle School. This is my third year here at Belieut. I had a difficult time transitioning from elementary to middle school. During my first year, I was not willing to listen to the teachers, control my anger, follow school rules, or complete my classwork. This was a serious problem for me because I saw that Ms. McKenzie was the type of teacher who had high expectations for all her students. She stated, "We are Belieut, we are the Belieut family now and every day is a new beginning." I knew that when she said that, not about to, she was not about to let me take the easy way out and fail. She was, she would communicate weekly for, with my mother to update her on my progress. She continued to encourage me even when I didn't believe in myself. Then I started saying to myself that I needed to start listening if I wanted to do bigger and better things in life. I had to learn to make better choices by coming to school regularly, listening to my teachers, staying in class, completing classwork, and talking to my counselor when I was upset or frustrated about an issue. The more I attended school regularly, the more comfortable I became with my class routines that my teachers set in place to give me the success I needed. Thankfully, at Belieut Middle School, I had a very supportive principal, Ms. Gravelin, who had an open door policy where whenever I was going through an issue, instead of running out of class, I had to go to her. She would calm me down with calm and kind tone of voice, then say what I needed to do to get ready once again to become a positive student in seventh grade. Thank you for your time.
Nice job.
Welcome and, what up? Welcome and good evening, everyone. My name is Angelise Cortez. I'm a seventh grade student at Belieut Middle School. This is my second year attending Belieut. Upon transitioning to Belieut, I struggled because the work was really hard and I wasn't used to the environment or the people at all. I realized that the work was challenging and I needed to ask for help when I needed to. In the beginning, I didn't want to ask for help, didn't want to listen to what anyone had to say, and did what I wanted to. I would regularly tell specific teachers to get off my back. These behaviors continued on to seventh grade, but a couple months back, I realized I wasn't making the right decision. My teachers that were on my back were cut because they cared and wanted me to succeed. My teachers began calling home and my mom was getting very upset with me. I also had a lot of issues that I shouldn't have been in. Everything hit me at once. I wasn't even happy with myself. I began working with my teachers one-on-one about how to bring my grades up. I feel comfortable talking to certain teachers and my principal. Ms. Gravelin, one day specifically, I let my negativity get in the way of good behavior. And Ms. Gravelin helped me out by talking to me about how I can avoid negative situations all on my own. I was taking a break out of class, talking about strategies to use when another situation like this happens again. One teacher, Ms. Begley, happened to walk by during this break outside the classroom and stopped to talk to me about how to better the community and myself. We brainstormed ways to, for me to focus my, to focus my energy throughout the day on better things. Overall, I started that one day off in such a bad place and by the end of the day, it was so different after talking to those whose best interest was me. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. Nice job, Angelise. I believe Springfield Renaissance is in the house and congratulations to Principal Arya Colburn for being Regional Principal of the Year, by the way, too. I apologize, we want to hear your names. They weren't clarified on the list. My fault on that. So we'd love to hear your names loud and proud.
Hi, my name is Megan Curly.
My name is Aliana Soto.
I'm Alyssa Theriak.
And I am Victor Soto.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening. Me and Aliana are eighth graders from the Springfield Renaissance School. For the past six years, we have held an event called Site Seminar in the spring where educators from around the country visit our school for two whole days. During Site Seminar, participants attend workshops, engage in conversations with students, staff, and reflect on their own practice. Feedbacks, feedback sessions are integrated throughout the two days. We run Site Seminar to show others how our differences make us unique and promote a strong school community using character traits, structures, and consistencies.
I'm Aliana Soto and as an ambassador, this is a chance for students to show the visitors what they know about the school. Megan and I have been ambassadors for two years now. As an ambassador, you hold a lot of accountability, responsibility, and knowledge. Being an ambassador means representing the character traits of Renaissance. Becoming an ambassador is not easy. Of course, you have to be in good academic standing and a teacher has to prove that you can handle the duty of representing the school while balancing your schoolwork. The role of an ambassador is important because it shows that our school works hard to rise to the challenges and duties of citizenship, which is part of our mission statement. During the Site Seminar, Megan and I helped run a workshop, which will be explained by our sixth graders, Victor and Alyssa.
Nice job.
Hello. I'm Alyssa Theriak.
And I am Victor Soto. The workshop that we participated in was about cultivating a positive sixth grade culture. Mindfulness plays a big role in creating a positive culture. It can affect the school and its surrounding community. Mindfulness is paying attention on purpose to focus on what is happening in the moment. Our instructor is Ms. Vanolis, who is our sixth grade, sixth grade adjustment counselor and recipient of the Greenspoot Award. She worked with our crew every morning to understand and practice the concepts of mindfulness.
At the Springfield Renaissance School, our crew has done mindfulness every day for one to five minutes since the first week of school. During the first week of school, we were all discombobulated, but now we know the basic concepts.
I can't say that word.
During the first week of school, we were all discombobulated, but now we know the basic concepts to mindfulness and what to do. It is a way to bring everyone together, no matter what skin color, race, or culture we are. By using mindfulness, we can create a group of people to come together to bring peace, relieve stress, or anger. The community should definitely use mindfulness, especially with all the violence that is happening around the world.
Nice job.
That is true. By using mindfulness before the school day, we are able to decrease our stress by focusing on our breathing. We have brought our sixth grade together by doing their mindfulness exercises during our weekly Monday opening circle. Also, mindfulness can physically rebuild our brain. It was scientifically proven that doing mindfulness for about 30 minutes a day over a period of eight weeks can improve an important part of our brain, which is for learning and memory.
In conclusion, mindfulness is a key to success and peace.
Nice job. That concludes our middle school representatives' presentations. We will have about a five-minute, seven-minute recess before we officially begin the meeting at 6:30. You're more than welcome to stay if you have to leave to go home. Have a great evening and thank you for coming down. No. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
President.
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 We all please rise for a moment of silence and then we'll be able to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll move to item number two. Approve the minutes of the March 29, 2018 Regular School Committee Meeting. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Vice Chair Collins is her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. These are section three items requiring a vote of the school committee. A is to approve the school security guards UFC, excuse me, UFCS agreements. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the agreement for our security guards union. Bill and the team from the school department have settled the contract per the specifications set forth by the school committee, so we just want to ratify it tonight and recommending approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments pertaining to this matter? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Attorney Murphy is her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. B is to approve the Technical Employees Association, the TEA, agreement. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another contract that's been settled with Bill Mahoney and the team according to the specifications that the school committee set forth for that agreement, so appreciate your support with it, recommending we ratify it.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments on this matter? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Ms. Naylor is her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. More sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. Now move to section informational discussion items. We're very happy on these two occasions. The first one is to recognize a homegrown and Springfield native who's come back, Dennis Duquette, president of the Mass Mutual Foundation, which has been a great corporate citizen for, I believe, 167 or 66 years. And we have a presentation for you, if you can come on down. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. We've been working with Springfield business leaders for years to support certain education programs where funding has been tight on our end to supplement services we really need for kids. And we're a huge believer in the City Connects program that we started with a Boston College group. And it's a research-based program that's touched thousands of our kids and our families. We've been expanding it in our schools as best we can. It's a great program and if you look at the data of the thousands of outreaches and services put in place for our families in the schools where the program exists, it's absolutely incredible. And all of our schools that came out of Level Four status, every one of those elementary schools, City Connects was part of the equation along with all the great work that the staff did, but it's really made a difference in the city of Springfield. We stretched our budget as much as we could this year, but Dennis Duquette and Mass Mutual stepped up with a million dollars to its, yeah, yeah. To expand the program to eight more schools in the city and we've continued to move forward. But from the bottom of my heart, Dennis, I want to thank you for that. It's great to see a Springfield person come home and like the mayor said, Mass Mutual's had such a track record of supporting the entire city and the Springfield public schools. But this, this is a special program for me, for my team, and for our kids, and I so thank you for supporting it because you're going to change the lives of thousands of families in this city that need wraparound services that this program provides. So again, from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of the school system, I just want to thank you and recognize you and recognize Mass Mutual as great corporate citizens in the city of Springfield.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent. Well, Dennis, I'm sure there's other school committee men that want to pour on accolades to you and, you know, being in the public eye, we could use some accolades once in a while. So, school committee members, if you have any comments you'd like to make? Vice Chair Collins?
It goes without doubt that Mass Mutual has been there for a long, long time for all of us. This is particularly a really rewarding thing for you to step up to because it is so close to the students and it makes such a big difference in their lives. I've seen it in action and rest assured, there's a lot of families who are going to be much better off for what you've done.
Any other school committee members?
I would like to just say thank you on behalf of many of the students that I've had the pleasure of working with. One in particular, I'm thinking about, had some challenges and was, had to move out of a school because of the challenges that he had, but because of City Connects, he was able to get it together. And he was awarded a scholarship for college because he was able to turn around in such a big way. So thank you for investing in this program and I know there's going to be many more students like the one that I'm thinking of.
Any other school committee members? Okay, hearing none. Dennis, again, as my father would say, the old man worked for the park department on it. And we're so happy that you decided to venture back and come back to the city of Springfield and lead Mass Mutual on their continued philanthropic efforts. This does, Mass Mutual does a multitude of things for the city of Springfield and it's a Fortune 100 company, we appreciate that. But this really hits home, very special to the superintendent, school committee administration because the more money we're able to pump in proactively upfront, it is paying huge dividends for us down the road. So cannot say enough about an outstanding corporate citizen who sets the bar in that case, Mass Mutual. So the podium, Mr. Duquette, Dennis, is yours.
Thank you very much. I'm glad that I don't have to sing like before, but we truly thank you for this opportunity on behalf of the Mass Mutual Foundation and all of my associates with Mass Mutual. It's my privilege to be representing them for this, for this meeting and for this recognition. It means an awful lot for you to actually take the time and invite, invite us down for this. So thank you very much. I'd like to say a special thank you to Superintendent Warwick and Assistant Superintendent Martinez. Without their counsel and leadership, we probably, we might not have gotten here today. We knew at Mass Mutual that we wanted to do something special for the schools and we knew that there was something out there that, that really was going to hit, hit some of the, the real challenges that are, that your kids, our kids are facing in these schools. And so through discussions with them, through their vision, through their leadership and counsel, and again, through the great work from our friends at City Connects and Boston College, it was wonderful to find something that had a record of achievement already, a great record of achievement here in the Springfield schools with the promise to extend that. So I know we're going to eight more schools as a result of this grant. Upwards of 2,700 more students will be exposed to the City Connects program. We're delighted about that. This is a program that's being recognized nationally. They're not only here in Springfield, but they're also down the road in Hartford. They have a couple of outposts in Ohio, Minneapolis, New York, et cetera. And they've been receiving accolades from organizations like Results for America, the University of Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Center for High Impact Philanthropy, and many others. So we know this is something that works. We know by virtue of the fact that it has a track record in Springfield. We're delighted to support it. And we're not going to, we're not going to go away from this as a result of that. We've made this grant and then we're making a commitment to continue to work with the school department and with City Connects to make sure that it's working, that it continues to work. And make sure that there are opportunities, if there are opportunities going forward, to recalibrate or expand even more, we want to be at the table to do that. So on behalf of Mass Mutual and the foundation, again, thank you so much.
Dennis, hold on. We have presented to Dennis Duquette, president of Mass Mutual Foundation, with grateful appreciation of Mass Mutual Foundation's continuing outstanding leadership as a community partner, as demonstrated by their generous support, unwavering commitment to broaden academic and economic opportunity for Springfield Public School students and their families. On behalf of the Springfield Public Schools and the school committee, April 12, 2018. Come on down, Dennis.
Thank you so much.
No, Dennis, through here. Dennis, go on right through here. Through here. Oh, we, we put another obstacle in there, didn't we? Dennis, we so appreciate it. Thank you very much. Can't tell you how much we appreciate this. You're the best. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so more good news. B is to recognize the 2018 Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awardees. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always a pleasure to present these awards tonight, and they're one of a series of awards, our Pioneer Valley Teacher of Excellence are going to win. We have 27 winners. You get one per thousand teachers in the community. I always say that Springfield teachers working in an urban environment and with what they've been able to do are second to none anywhere, and you're going to see some of our best tonight recognized for their outstanding work on behalf of our kids every day in our schools, and they are absolutely incredible. I did have the wonderful opportunity to visit their classes and talk to them about the award, so that was a real treat, and we want to bring them forward with their principals tonight and honor them for their great work. There's going to be an event at the Log Cabin in May to honor them also, and, but this is just an extra piece we wanted to put in in Springfield to recognize the people who they're where the rubber meets the road in the school system and for the great work they do with our kids day in and day out. And it was really, again, a treat to visit them in their classroom. So, we're going to present the award winners with the principals tonight, and Sue, are you going to call the names?
We have, yeah, we can call.
Yeah, Lewis, you want to call?
Brookings. The awardee is Nicholas Martino, accompanied by Principal Terry Poe. Put your hands together.
I love to hear it.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Dorment is a doubleheader, Maureen Manos and Christina Howard. Come on down.
I've been asked to tell you that Christina's not here tonight.
Oh, accepting the award on behalf of... Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, Rhonda's here also too, and this is for Maureen Manos. Madam Principal, thank you very much. Okay, Dryden, Elizabeth Bechek, and Principal Hoffman here also. Come on down.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Hi, Sheila. How about I sit along? This is, congratulations. E-C-E-S, Elizabeth Hemingway, related to Ernest Hemingway, the author, autist, Integrated Preschool. Come on down.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Wait a minute, that's for you.
Yes.
Yeah, you're the teacher. I keep thinking I'm a teacher, my kids.
Okay, Horeen. Yeah, yeah. Horeen is a doubleheader, Fay Rowe and Laura Netherwood, K-E-L and Dance. Come on down. The principal, Mr. Espinone is also here too. Good to see you, Madam Principal, too.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wait a minute, that's for you.
Yes.
Yeah, you're the teacher. I keep thinking I'm a teacher, my kids.
Okay, Horeen. Yeah, yeah. Horeen is a doubleheader, Fay Rowe and Laura Netherwood, K-E-L and Dance. Come on down. The principal, Mr. Espinone is also here too. Good to see you, Madam Principal, too.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay. Kensington is in the house, Erin O'Brien, and Principal Thompson is also here. Come on down. Congratulations.
My night, my time. Yeah, happens to all of us.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, love the outfit. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Lincoln is a doubleheader, and Emma Bartlett, and Ashley Karen Murray, in third grade math ILS, and Principal Kahn is here. Come on down.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Apple doesn't fall too far away from the tree. I know. It's true to my daughter, too. Congratulations. Oh, congratulations. Thank you. My daughters, too, yeah.
Pottinger School is in the house. Pottinger's in the house, Kathryn Varanka, E-L-A-I-L-S, and Principal Williams is also here too. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Everything good?
Just Nut Academies in the house, Catherine Phalen, literacy coach, and James Sharp, seventh grade E-L-A. Come on down.
Congratulations. Thank you, dear.
Congratulations.
Apple doesn't fall too far away from the tree. I know. It's true to my daughter, too. Congratulations. Oh, congratulations. Thank you. My daughters, too, yeah.
Pottinger's in the house, Kathryn Varanka, E-L-A-I-L-S, and Principal Williams is also here too. Congratulations.
Just Nut Academies in the house, Kathryn Phalen, literacy coach, and James Sharp, seventh grade E-L-A. Come on down.
Congratulations.
Sharp Sports Coach. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Sharp Sports Coach.
Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Chestnut Tag is in the house, Janelle Clark, E-L-A, and Elizabeth Rivera, special ed, and I know Principal O'Connor is in the house. Come on down. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Love that hair, too. Thank you. Congratulations.
Doug in Academy's in the house, Evan Christner. Come on down. Seventh grade math.
Lucky Shark tonight, Ellen. Lucky Shark, no shoes, too. Congratulations. Yeah, Utah.
Forest Park Middle Schools in the house, Principal Maza is here. The winner, put your hands together for Anne Marie Simons. Simon.
Love that hair. Congratulations.
My alma mater, Kylie, it's not Kylie Middle School, Jennifer Pease is in the house, sixth grade social studies. Come on down. Congratulations.
Nice boots, nice boots. Yes, STEM is in the house, Arthur Thomas, eighth grade math, CPDT, and Principal Martinez is here. Come on down.
That's sharp, that's sharp. That's sharp, man, sharp. That's some good swag over there, isn't it? Principal Martinez, all right.
High School, my alma mater, High School of Commerce is in the house, Thomas Waite New, math, come on down.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
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 Doubleheader, we have a deuce from Putna Vocational Technical Academy, Carol Crowe, vocational ed. Tia Gardette, guidance counselor. Congratulations, come on down.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Springfield Renaissance is in the house, Verba Van Oeslis, guidance counselor.
Come on down.
Van Oeslis, yes. Okay. Want to make sure. Miss Van Oeslis, congratulations, and thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I don't see Kevin.
SciTech.
SciTech is in the house, the highest, high school science technology, Hannah Yaye. Did I get it right? All right. S-E-I, science. See, the superintendent said to me, "Good luck on that one," but I got it right. Okay, thank you so much. Congratulations. This is District Wide, Laura Lee Cabrera, and Laura Mendez will come down. E-L-A, congratulations, come on down.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Congratulations. Unfortunately, two other award winners could not be present, but we want to acknowledge them and thank them from another alma mater, my White Street School, Kathleen Cicero, sped, fourth grade, and Van Sickle, Tanis Sinnett, social studies. Congratulations to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham.
B is Building and Maintenance Committee. Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. C is Legislative and Contracts Committee. Thank you, Ms. Perez. D is Curriculum and Programs Committee. Programs and curriculum and programs committee? Okay. All aboard. Okay. I meant that about the train. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. E is Budget Finance Committee. Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. F is Vocational Education Committee. Thank you, Ms. Naylor. G is Technology Committee. Thank you, Attorney Murphy. H is School Safety Committee. Thank you, Ms. Gresham. We'll now move to the reporter superintendent. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items tonight. We want to recognize, and we put a little circular in your packet on this, Springfield's Renaissance School. Aria Coburn was named Regional Principal of the Year with the Magnet School. Great accomplishment. As you all know, in just a few years there, she raised the level of a Renaissance school from a Level Three to a Level Two school. So, incredible work, and now she's nationally recognized with a award, so a great honor from the Magnet Schools of America. MSBA, we had a few more positive announcements for the city of Springfield. You have some informational pieces in your packet under the Mass School Building Authority, but we had Brightwood School and Lincoln accepted after many submissions and many hours and months of working on a plan. We're into schematic design and moving forward. Very, very positive work with that project, and Maria was exceptionally helpful with the community as we did the community outreach, so very, very grateful for that. Just so grateful for the school committee and the mayor, time after time with these projects, and we've had more than anyone else in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We always support the projects, and the mayor not only supports the projects, but does the bonding with the city to put the kind of significant monetary support we need forward to put our kids in 21st century buildings. As you all know, Brightwood was built in 1898, you know, and Lincoln 1910. No proper facilities offer 21st century education, so schematic design now moves forward. The feasibility design has been great with it, and we're really looking forward with moving this project forward because it's going to be a great project for our city. So, really exciting news.
Superintendent, I wanted to thank school committee woman Perez, Maria, because the community outreach was important. This is a great project, and everybody knows that, but sometimes people don't receive all the information, or there's miscommunication, and the superintendent had indicated to me those meetings that you were able to hold down there were invaluable to reassure parents, families, and dispel any type of miscommunication. So, I want to thank you very much on that. Sorry, Superintendent Warwick.
Second, a big, big announcement is DeBery and Homer, which is another combined project, is accepted into the feasibility phase, which we were at last year with the other two. So excited about those projects. I know Barbara's done a lot to push those forward, but these are two great projects. And again, Homer, believe it or not, was built in 1898, and DeBery, we have some structural issues, so this is a needed project, and that's moving forward, too. And these projects are absolutely fabulous projects with the school within the school design, state-of-the-art, and new facilities, but...
Congratulations. Unfortunately, two other award winners could not be present, but we want to acknowledge them and thank them, from another alma mater, my White Street School, Kathleen Cicero, sped, fourth grade, and Van Sickle, Tanis Sinet, social studies, congratulations to you all, thank you. B is Building and Maintenance Committee? Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. C is Legislative and Contracts Committee? Thank you, Ms. Perez. D is Curriculum and Programs Committee? Programs and curriculum and programs committee? All aboard, okay. I meant that about the train. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. E is Budget Finance Committee? Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. F is Vocational Education Committee? Thank you, Ms. Nayler. G is Technology Committee? Thank you, Attorney Murphy. H is School Safety Committee? Thank you, Ms. Gresham. We'll now move to the reporter superintendent, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items tonight, we want to recognize and put a little circular in your packet on this Springfield Renaissance School, Aria Coburn was named Regional Principal of the Year with the Magnet School, great accomplishment. As you all know, in just a few years there, she raised the level of a Renaissance School from a Level Three to a Level Two school, so incredible work, and now she's nationally recognized with us at War, so a great honor from the Magnet Schools of America. MSBA, we had a few more positive announcements for the city of Springfield, you have some informational pieces in your packet under the Mass School Building Authority, but we had Brightwood School and Lincoln accepted after many submissions and many hours and months of working on a plan, we're into schematic design and moving forward, very, very positive work with that project, and Maria was exceptionally helpful with the community, as we did the community outreach, so very, very grateful for that, just so grateful for the school committee and the mayor, time after time with these projects, and we've had more than anyone else in the Commonwealth in Massachusetts, we always support the projects, and the mayor not only supports the projects, but does the bonding with the city to put the kind of significant monetary support we need forward to put our kids in 21st century buildings. As you all know, Brightwood was built in 1898, you know, and Lincoln 1910, no proper facilities offered 21st century education, so schematic design now moves forward, the feasibility design has been great with it, and we're really looking forward with moving this project forward, because it's going to be a great project for our city, so really exciting news.
I wanted to thank school committee woman Perez, Maria, because the community outreach was important, this is a great project, and everybody knows that, but sometimes people don't receive all the information, or there's miscommunication, and the superintendent indicated to me, those meetings that you were able to hold down there were invaluable to reassure parents, families, and dispel any type of miscommunication, so I want to thank you very much on that. Sorry, Superintendent Warwick.
Second, big, big announcement is DeBerry and Homer, which is another combined project, is accepted into the feasibility phase, which we were at last year with the other two, so excited about those projects, I know Barbara's done a lot to push those forward, but these are two great projects, and again, Homer, believe it or not, was built in 1898, and DeBerry, we have some structural issues, so this is a needed project, and that's moving forward, too, and these projects are absolutely fabulous projects with the school within the school design, state-of-the-art, and new facilities, but the proper cafeterias, gyms, everything else, and the kids just haven't had that, so it's a huge, important step forward for our city, and again, so grateful on that, so now we'll be in this feasibility phase for a year, and hopefully get into schematic design in the next year. And last, our.
Did you say something? Sorry. We're taking a lead in the Commonwealth in this, they asked us to see the pilot, these doubling up would make sense, and I have to say to Ms. Gresham, every time she would see me, "Mr. Mayor, don't forget Homer Street," and I credit you with that, and we were able to parlay that through Superintendent, his team and my team, saying, "If we do the Brightwood-Lincoln, you got to give me Homer and DeBerry," and they did, so thank you to everybody.
And the accelerated repair projects have been great, also, we've improved over 25 of our buildings with the windows, roofs, doors, heating systems, so we have an old building stock, our average building is 55 years old, it's important, we reinvest to protect the integrity of those buildings, this is just one of those great projects, South End Middle School, 1.7 million dollars for new windows and doors, which will go a long way towards improving that school, so we're continuing to push, we've had more accelerated repair programs than anyone else in the Commonwealth since they started that, and MSBA years ago didn't support those efforts at all, it was only new builds, so those are really important, especially to cities like Springfield, and we've taken full advantage of them, and again, so appreciate the support of the school committee and the mayor in coming up with the bonding to fund all these projects, but we've made very aggressive submissions, and it's really making a difference in our building, so I thought that was great news. Another piece, a good announcement, 1.8 million dollars into the city of Springfield coming in, in two installments, one in April, one in June, for our students who've arrived from Puerto Rico, you know, very, very grateful to the state government for coming up with that funding, as you know, Springfield had more students than any other school system in the Commonwealth, and almost a quarter of the entire number of students that actually came into the Commonwealth, but some years back, we had developed a new E L L model and put it in every school, and so we had the E L L, ESL services in every school, so we had this huge influx that was spread out throughout the city, we had the capacity within our programmatic model to take those kids in, set up some new systems at our pay center, working with Pat Bradley and Lydia Martinez to expedite the testing of the kids as they came in and their placement, and we've really done a great job for these kids and providing services, what we didn't expect when they came in, we knew they'd have pretty intense E L L service, we didn't expect that almost 50% would have special ed needs also, and we had to have done all the teamwork on that and sped placements, which as you all know are very, very costly, so this is going to go a long way towards helping with us, this is three times what any other system received in the Commonwealth, but we had three times more kids than any other system, and surprisingly, Boston, which a much larger population, had a very small influx, so, you know, Springfield was the leader, but the funding is going to go a long way, because there's going to be ongoing sped costs as well as E L L costs for these kids, so this is really going to help us, and is a positive development. Ms. Gresham. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I think we're always working on that, we have school adjustment counselors in every building in the city of Springfield, that's really unheard of in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we've got a lot of partnerships with some private clinics, Gandara, but many of the clinics throughout the city work with us every day in the schools, providing those kinds of services, and of course, City Connect reaches out and provides those connections to all of them, so it's absolutely great with the wraparound services, but that's so important, and there are costs to that, and we have to remember that as well, so that's an important piece.
We really, you got to commend on the school side and the city side, everybody rallied together, worked together, and with the nonprofits, I also want to thank the New North Citizens Council, which I had asked to be the conduit and facilitator for any and all, and Superintendent Warwick, to you and your team, Assistant Superintendent Lydia Martinez, really yeoman's work from school and city side, I mean, everybody came together to help out these families in need, some which will are hopeful to go back to their island of Puerto Rico, and some that are going to stay, and so that's, again, Springfield rose up to the occasion in a difficult situation, so to everybody involved, thank you very much, thank you, Superintendent Warwick.
It was nice to see the whole community respond to this, and New North was such a great leader for us for so long, but really stepped up big on this, and I think it's a credit to the entire community. 1.8 million. Lastly, we were talking at a couple, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think any of us can count the number of times that you say, "We take all comers, Mayor," and this is like the proof, everybody's welcome, and then you went after the state, so you made them help put money where your mouth is, which doesn't happen very often, so it's nice to see happen.
And the governor heard it, and he's promised funding for next year also, but it's very, very welcome, because it's been a stretch on our needs, but we're very proud to have stepped forward, again, as an entire community, and we do take all comers, and this was quite the influx over a very short period of time, and so proud of our staff and how they responded to this, and really met this in a very positive way, so.
And the schools, I'd be commended, because from everything I've heard, those children were embraced into each school, so.
Yeah, that was huge, I think the staff at every school stepped forward, made them part of the school families, and I think it was fortunate for us, some years back, we made the decision to have an E L L program at every school, so everyone could go to their neighborhood school and receive that services, and that really worked out well, because the population was kind of spread, and it really gave us capacity to provide help for all those students, some school systems that only had E L L services in a few schools just became overcome with this wave and had to try to start new programs in schools, and that was very, very difficult, to hire that kind of staff mid-year and be able to put it in place and start a new program, so it really worked out well for the city of Springfield, and again, great job to the staff and the schools. My last piece, and this is in your packet, our school stat report, you know, just a few pieces of information, but overall, I think things are going in the right direction, on page two, you can see our attendance is up again, it's 92.8%, which is good, and we're up in almost every category except the chronically absent and the severely chronically absent, and those are huge challenges for us, as you know, because with DCF and DTA and the court's not able to kind of provide the support, those are the kind of kids and families that you need that support with, but our teacher attendance is up, the paraprofessional attendance is up, that was a result of, I think, some of the great work that was done with the contracts, and then you have a report for every school to see how they're doing, and on page nine, you can see some of the safety data, and see that that's really trending in a positive direction, too, with our suspensions down, assaults and batteries on staff way down, you know, over the years, you know, we know arrests have been way down, so overall, very, very positive trending with all the data, so we're moving in the right direction in the area, and I think it's the proactive programs, like City Connects, the counseling and everything else, that have made a difference, so we're moving in the right direction, you can see there's a little uptick, small uptick in bullying, but that's been way down over the years, so we're really moving in the right direction with that data, but again, it goes back to all the programs that have been put in place, your support with City Connects and the counseling initiatives, everything else, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick, any more questions or comments pertaining to Superintendent Warwick's report?
I do have a question, and not necessarily to be answered tonight, but I know we, maybe a month or so ago, were talking about some of the work that needed to be done at Harina, and I know with all of the wonderful things that are happening, so I don't want to nitpick at any point, but if we can get an update at some point on where that stands, because we still have parents coming and asking questions, yes.
Actually, Maria and I were talking today about it, so.
I had a meeting, actually, based on what you're requiring, the north end coalition is still meeting, we're still looking for some other answers that needs to be answered, but in overall, I think we go in the right pathway, and believe me, the community is very aware of when new schools are coming up, I had a meeting this afternoon with Superintendent Warwick in terms of the Harina School.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Lydia, Maria and I met today on it, again, it's in the hands of our legislative delegation now, and there's been a lot of outreach to the legislative designation, because you have to fix that membrane on the highway in order for us to have the integrity of the tunnel, so we're working, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Perez and Ms. Nayler, I know that Senator Welch and Rep. Gonzalez, that's the key piece now, we've indicated with Mass DOT, to get that membrane fixed, because water, it's coming from up top, and then Pat Sullivan and our crew will go to town with dealing with the situation, just because we don't want to throw good money away on bad, so that's where it's at, I know, again, Representative Gonzalez and Senator Jimmy Welch are pushing the, you know, Mass, that let's just, let's get this membrane fixed, and then we can take care of the internal stuff.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Superintendent's report? Okay, hearing none, unfinished business? Yes.
The district had a visit from Desi, have we heard anything from there?
We haven't gotten that report yet, it was supposed to come at the end of January, we've inquired a few times, they said it's on the way, but it's a very comprehensive report, so they're a little slow getting them back to us, they've told us we should have it soon, Bob.
Thanks. Anything else under unfinished business? Okay, hearing none, anything on the new business? Ms. Hurst.
So, I just wanted, we talked about quite a few things, one, the funding that we just got for the students from Puerto Rico, Harina, and I know that those are on their march to be discussed, but I want to remember that April 25th is Day on the Hill for school committee members, which is an opportunity to go and advocate to your legislators about what it is that we need in our own districts, or specifically for us here in Springfield, and it happens to be in the midst of budget season, which is a great time to go in and sort of talk about priority legislation, especially the Chapter 70 funding, because that continues to be an issue, I just got back from San Antonio and spent a full day from eight to five setting national legislative priorities, and the arming of teachers is going to come up, the windfall provisions are going to come up, there's lots of bills that are going to come to us at the federal level and then make their way to us on the state and local level, so it's just a great opportunity to go to the State House and advocate on behalf of our district, because we need it.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst, and thank you for always representing us so well, not only here in the state, but nationally, too, on that, the other thing that comes up is the charter question, and the funding and equities that occur, all we, Superintendent Warwick and I and the school committee always said, "Just give us our fair funding, give us our fair funding," so, thank you, Ms. Hurst, any other thing on new business?
One reminder is, if a question comes up from a legislator, that the foundation review piece that the legislature passed is the big ask, because that would be critically important to cities like Springfield, relative to provide the right funding for the schools, we're underfunded, you know, approximately by 25 to 30 million dollars, just on that, and maybe more if you take everything into account, so that would be, you know, a big ask, along with the charter reimbursement and circuit breaker reimbursement.
Thank you, anything else under new business? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Perez, or second, second by Ms. Hurst, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, the ayes have it, good evening and thank you for watching.